I'm hanging in there.
Anyway, so we need how many more?
One more. Steve is somewhere here.
Um.
We've got Ben. Good. And where Keith is.
I see, I see Ben. Yeah.
Yeah.
Steve.
Good evening, Andy. Hi, Timmy.
Good evening.
Um. Wouldn't wait another couple of minutes. See if uh our fifth shows up. Being Keith.
There's Lion, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Andy, I am going to appoint you Secretary for the evening.
That's good. Tammy, you get to read any letters that came.
Oh. It's hurting.
All, all eighty-eight pages.
Yeah, um, when somebody sends us um a legal opinion, we can say that they sent us a legal opinion. You don't have to read it.
Yeah, I didn't think so. Because basically it's opinion, not fact.
So that attorney is present. He's in the attendees. So he plans to um speak.
Now, I, I figure you have to look at it as fact, but the problem with case law is that for any one item of case law, there's another item somewhere that contradicts it almost all the time. Not all the time, but almost all the time. Um, and so it's better for us to refer those things to our attorneys if there is a real question.
Yes, I agree.
I'm gonna give Lion a call.
Go ahead. I was gonna wait till five after.
Hey, Andy, I'm just about to join. I'm kind of working.
Okay.
Maybe late. I'm sorry.
All right, we'll see you within the next couple of minutes, right? All right, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, I'll get things rolling here. Um. The, the first item to cover is to take roll call. And uh on my monitor, uh I see Ben Hamter, uh Steve Ferguson.
Present.
Keith Lyons has joined us, Andy Conroy and myself. So we have five participants this evening uh for the continuation. Um, it is seven oh four. And good evening and welcome to the uh October seventeenth twenty twenty-four meeting of the zoning board of appeals. For all present, let's spend a few minutes reviewing how this meeting will be conducted. For the first two hours prior to nine P M., we shall hold a public hearing on the application that you have received a notice on and that was listed in the Norwalk hour for hearing. After the application is announced by the chair and read by the secretary, the applicant will state his or her name for the record and then present the appeal or relief being sought. Please present those zoning issues that are relevant to the practical difficulties or hardship requiring this application. After you or your representative has spoken, those in favor will have a chance to be heard. After that segment, those against the application will have the opportunity to state their opposition for the record. In the in the case of an appeal, the zoning staff will have the opportunity to present their findings. Finally, after those against the application have spoken, the applicant and only the applicant will have the opportunity to rebut and respond to the issues raised. The hearing is then closed and the next application called. New applications will not normally be heard after nine P M. As the board must discuss and act upon these applications. Please note that no further public input is accepted at that time. You are welcome to stay for this portion of tonight's meeting. But should you decide to leave, you may contact the zoning office tomorrow to learn about our decision. Before we proceed tonight, I must remind you that this hearing is a recorded video conference and will become a matter of permanent public record. For public comment period, all commentators must state their name and address and comments must be on topic. Anyone using threatening hateful or sexually explicit language will be cut off and removed from the meeting and will not be allowed to rejoin. Uh, the first case to be heard this evening is application two four dash zero nine one nine dash zero one. Carlo and Meredith Vona. This is a continuation from the September nineteenth hearing. Uh, so we shall proceed. Uh, Mr. Blank.
Uh, thank you. Uh, good evening. Uh, Adam Blank, uh attorney for Carlo and Meredith Vona. I live here in Norwalk and the application again is nineteen um dock. Uh, so as, as I think you'll recall, we were here last month and the number of questions were raised um and you asked us to provide some additional uh information and confirmation for this uh meeting to close out the public hearing. I'm gonna try to run through those items uh now. And we do have um Mr. Vona, uh the property owner, Matt Pop, the landscape architect, uh Jim Jamison, the architect, and Wayne Devenzo, the civil engineer uh on the Zoom in case any questions come for them. Otherwise, uh they're, they're really just here to answer questions tonight, not to give formal presentations. Um, with that, uh, let me just share my screen. Uh, okay, so this is the, the house uh that we're talking about at nineteen dock and this was a FEMA variance related to uh additional story. Uh, one of the questions that you asked us about were sort of what was the uh history of the changes that have been made to the application and, and was the architectural review board uh for Village Creek actually signing off on the plans that were presented to you folks in September? And so we, after the meeting, we went back through all of the plans. Um, and just so that we're sort of clear on the history here because there's because there have also been some neighbor opposition materials submitted again uh for this hearing. Just want to make sure we're sort of clear on the general history and timeline with these plans. There was an original plan. I think over a year ago that was submitted to the Architectural Review Board in Village Creek that called for the house to be elevated for FEMA compliance and called for a fairly sizable third floor addition that would be on the essentially the right side. As you look at the house from the street on the right side of the house would be the upper story. Um, there was a fair amount of complaints to that proposal, particularly from uh Ms. Sims and Ms. Marshall, who were the two neighbors that are complaining about the current proposal in front of you and have submitted uh letters in opposition. Um, those initial plans after receiving the complaints and the negative feedback, um, there were some back and forth and the Vonas agreed to compromise and flip. They flipped the addition on the third floor to make it on the sort of left side, the the upper this, this side of the house instead of it used to be over here and it was, it was bigger and they scaled it back. Um, after making those compromises, this is back in January um of this year, uh, there was a series of emails. Miguel Fresconi is the Chair of the Architectural Review Board. Um, he had originally said, again, January twelfth. Um, there's some issues. The Marshals, they're ready to approve. The Terry at sixteen dock has a counter proposal which is attached. She'll sign off if you eliminate us, one of the sections on the, the upper story. Would you be willing to consider this? Um, in response from Mr. Vona, I'll cut out that section essentially in half as shown. You don't have this. So let me keep the house as a three bedroom. It was originally going to be a four bedroom with the upper floor containing two bedrooms. Uh, response back uh that uh let me, this looks good to me. I'll see what Terry thinks. Provide a hard copy. Um, he provided a hard, I'll provide that. Um, it's an excellent proposal. Um, then from the architecture, this is January twelfth, same day. Thanks, Carlo. Terry's accepted your new proposal. Let me go through all the docs, see what else we might be needed. And then he asked for the, the, the remaining steps. So they had an agreement based on him cutting down the house that he had the neighbor support for and ultimately obtained the Architectural Review Board approval of. Fast forward from January to September, there, there was three changes made to those plans. Um, the plans uh ended up having um uh, one thing was the, in looking at this, it's sort of a split level on the first floor and they ended up raising the overall elevation of the structure by one foot from what was approved by the Architectural Review Board from what you saw in September. Second uh change uh was that the uh, there was, there was no stairs depicted coming off the house. Um, and uh those stairs had been added in from the original plans to what was shown to you. And the third change was that there was a retaining wall that had been added along the edge of the driveway to support the driveway um coming into the house. After seeing those changes, the um, the, the, and the Vona's and speaking with them, they and talking with the architect, they were able to um kind of change the elevation a little bit on the split level portion so that they could, they were able to bring the roof line back down a foot. And we filed revised plans dated in October, October eighth, which you have. And in those revised plans, the elevation matches exactly what the arb originally approved. The stairs, they, they, they need stairs. The, the original plans hadn't been synced up to the civil. Um, and uh the, after having it synced up, they need stairs. So there's still stairs shown on the plans. And the retaining wall, we think it was an improvement to eliminate the retaining wall. Um, it's just not needed. So there's no, there's still no retaining wall on the plans uh that you have in front of you. Those um plans went back to the Architectural Review Board. Um, again, Miguel is the Chair. October sixteenth, so after we got the newest plans and this is in your file and I do want to read this, uh you um, I, I, I write this letter and follow up to my previous letter in support of the bonus plans to raise their home so it can be made FEMA compliant and to add a partial upper story addition on their home. I know Village Creek's flat roof rules pose a hardship for the Vona's. I understand there was some confusion as to the evolution of the construction plans. The Vona's initial plans to make the home FEMA compliant and to add an upper story were reviewed by the Village Creek Architectural Review Board and complaints were raised by neighbors regarding the impact the home would have on their views. As a result of those concerns, the Vona's revised their plans by shifting the upper story structure and reducing its mass in a compromise with neighbors. We approve those revised plans which are nearly identical to the plans in front of you currently. We appreciate the Vona's willingness to work with the community. Notably, our process for reviewing and approving constructions allows neighbors who disagree with plans to appeal our approval. No appeals were filed of the approval by any resident of Village Creek. They've reviewed the updated plan and write this letter in support of both their variance and campsite application. No concerns over their proposal to raise the home so it can be FEMA compliant and add a partial upper story addition. It'll be great to see the home brought into FEMA compliance and updated in a manner that is in harmony with Village Creek Neighborhoods, Flat Roof Homes and Mid-Century Modern Style. Miguel Fresconi and I, I believe, but he's not sort of part of our team. So I don't really know, but I, I think he's uh on the Zoom as a member of the public. Um, I don't know if he plans to speak independent of being asked to, but I, I, he had said that he thought he would be on the Zoom and thought he'd be available to answer questions if you folks ended up having concerns. So um, I, I, I think that kind of overviews the process and that assure, I hope gives you assurances that what you're seeing and we're asking you to approve uh the Architectural Review Board uh supports uh as well. Um, another issue that uh was raised was about um impact on views. Uh, I believe that you um you guys asked for some photographs um or something of that sort to show how this might impact the neighbors' views that were complaining about their views. And I, I know there was some debate amongst yourselves about whether views were even a proper consideration, but um so we did, we did get some photos. I'll show you first. So the home is at nineteen dock. This is the city's G I S mapping that shows elevation contours. These, the, the darker, you can, it's hard to tell, but there's a thicker line between thinner. Each line is a foot of change. And between a thick line and a thick line is ten feet of elevation change. Nineteen, we're here. There's a thick line right, right with us. Sixteen and fourteen are the neighbors that have complained. You can see at this one, you're up ten feet, eleven, twelve, thirteen, about fourteen feet to where their house is, to where our footing of our houses. And this one is actually higher. It's up closer to seventeen or eighteen feet above us. Um, then uh, so sixteen is this one. So I'll show you. What we ended up doing was uh move this out of the way here. Let me go to the top. So what we were able to do, this is sort of the best that we were able to do. Hopefully it suffices for, for our purposes this evening, but uh Mr. Vona was able to get some stakes put up on the house. And you'll see they've got the tips are orange on here. The stakes represent um the, the proposed height of the new structure. You'll see that it runs uh, but this height doesn't block any water view actually at all, but does block a little bit of the, the marsh grass, I guess. But, but it comes across here. When you get to this point here, there was a inability to put a stake in here, but, but when it comes to here.
Adam, hold on. Are you pointing things out? Cause I'm not seeing anything.
Oh, yeah.
I see the photograph, but I don't see it.
Do you see my cursor at all or no? It doesn't show up?
There you go.
Yes, it does.
Okay.
It's showing up. It's like a little tiny ghost.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. Um, this is, this is as technically savvy as I get. You know, it's moderate. I'm not, I'm not super, but so so, so the, this is, you'll see right in here, there's an orange spray paint on the house.
Yeah.
And it's fairly hard to see because of the, the trees, but, but behind the trees, there are two taller posts here. These are up about five feet. Um, the taller ones are up about fourteen and a half feet. That's the proposed elevation of the, the, the new home that would extend out to where this hash mark is on the side. And at this point, it would come down and be even with these posts here. So right, so the, the bump out or the, the, the upper story will be right there. So there's a view and that's a zoomed in view. So I'm not sure it's real representative. This, you can see it as well. Uh, as you zoom out a little bit more, this is what we're talking about here to here. Um, and zoomed out back further, this is from, from the front steps, not from up in the house, but from the front steps. That's, that's the impact that they, there would be out of view. Again, it's really mostly of the marsh grass uh here, not of the water beyond. On the other property, that's a little hard.
Again, hold on a sec. Where was the photographer standing?
The, this, this, you can see, this is the s- front steps.
Of what?
Of this is of the house of uh sixteen thousand.
Of sixteen?
Fourteen.
Sorry.
A fourteen dock.
Fourteen, alright.
So that's for front stoop, fourteen sins.
Adam, just, just slow down a sec. Um, I think what I'm saying, you put your cursor uh on the taller one. Yeah. Stop right there if you would. So you're saying from there to what point to the left of that would be um, the new construction?
So it's to the, from here.
Yeah.
Or to here, to that hash mark right here is where there will be elevated in an addition.
Yeah.
And then
and then it gets lower.
From the hash mark over, it's lower, correct? From there all the way across.
Got it. Thanks.
All right. If I jump to the other house.
Oh.
Do, do you not, you want to go back to somebody? Are we good? So on the other
Yeah.
From there, this is the driveway. You see the it's, it's hard to tell, but there's Mr. Vona and Mrs. Vona's home here. Um, this is from uh up a little bit higher. There's the home down there. The addition would be somewhere back in here. Um, a, a close up zoom. A little bit of a zoom. You can see they'll see a little bit here. This is kind of blocked by the shrubs here. Um, and those are the photos from the, the other neighboring house. Um, tho- those, so that, that was sort of what we got for, for photos. Um, the, we also got, since I think since the last meeting, there's, there was a letter of support from six dock and seventeen dock that were submitted and are in your file. Um, there was also um, I both, the, as you know, is this wonky. I mean, it's the state requires it. So you guys don't get a choice, but the, the CAM sort of findings that you guys make, but then they really go to planning and zoning to do a, a full CAM site plan review. We did provide written responses to the planning and zoning staff that related to the CAM site uh report uh that Amelia Williams had issued uh earlier. That those responses are technically part of your file. I, I don't think that you had articulated CAM specific concerns related to the variance portion of the application. So I'm not going to run through with you all of our CAM responses to planning and zoning generally unless you'd like to uh hear those.
Well, the only thing that came up, Adam, was the driveway. Um, you're planning on making some changes to the area around the driveway, but I think you've abandoned those, have you not?
Right, right. That we were gonna have a retaining wall that presented some, some challenges, let's say. Uh, so we got rid of the retaining wall.
Right.
Um.
Let me ask you another couple of questions. Just make sure I've got the ground layout correct. The direct across the street neighbor is eighteen?
Uh, it's not really direct. Um.
And then what is next? Twenty? And neither of them have said the view will be blocked, right?
Carlo, you want to, so eighteen is, is, so I think twenty and eighteen, yeah, are the closest and they haven't had any objection.
No, it's um Millie and um, and I believe we have a, a letter of uh support from from uh eighteen. Um, and her name escapes me right now, but she's really, um, she's really been supportive through the whole process. So, um, and I believe you have that letter on file.
And then sixteen and um.
Sixteen and fourteen are up here, yeah.
Sixteen and fourteen were saying that you're gonna block the view. Um, and I noticed that neither are adjoining properties. Eighteen is the adjoining part.
Correct. Um, so then uh the only other uh point I want to just raise with you, um, and I, I think, I don't know if it was for the, for public consumption at the time, but Mr. Conroy, I think noted that we're talking about the case law and that you've, you've, you've seen some from both sides here and um you can interpret some of it differently and I, I, I get that. I, I don't really want to get into the weeds of, of various case law determinations. I, but I do want to just say that um you know, the Connecticut case law is pretty darn clear that a variance can be granted to bring a home into FEMA compliance. A variance can also be granted independent of that for um historic nature of a home or architectural uh features. That was what was in our initial papers. It was repeated again in our October filings. Um, there was a statement made at the hearing, the last hearing that uh by the uh neighbors council, that a variance can only be granted if by denying the variance, um, there would be absolutely no use whatsoever of the property. And I think the bulk of the case law that we submitted was really submitted for, for the proposition that, that uh variances are granted all of the time, particularly FEMA variances, when what's being proposed is not the smallest possible structure you could ever humanly imagine uh on a lot. Um, it doesn't have to be the smallest um for FEMA compliance. And in fact, the main case, the Supreme Court case they cited and we cited uh where the Supreme Court said that the FEMA variance was, was upheld by the zoning board and by the Supreme Court, this Meyer Whitman case. That didn't even involve the house or the principal structure. That was an accessory structure. So if you're talking about granting a FEMA variance for an accessory structure, that's clearly not for the sole that, that the property would have no use without an accessory structure. Um, the principal structure state.
Um, let's, let me get you to be more specific. Are you asking for a variance based on the FEMA application?
We, we've, we've, we've asked for, we believe there's a number of bases that provide for the variance. One was the, the Village Creek Flat Roof historic district and historic. This is a historic.
But what about the FEMA thing? I, I
Yeah, and I know you don't agree with it.
Your reasoning, as long as we stay within the height requirements. The height requirement here is, is peculiar because we're talking about a flat roof.
Right, so, so and I, I, you may not, you may not agree with both of the grounds. I think that there's two grounds that, that FEMA and the Village Creek both provide independent grounds. You only need one of them. You don't need both of them, um, but, but provide grounds for the granting of a variance here.
Yeah, let, let me stop you again, just so we get clarity. We have typically authorized the lifting of a building if the footprint of the building was the same or smaller.
Correct. Okay. Um, the, the one, the, and the final point I'll make and then, and then I'll, and then I'll shut up is um, the um the, the, in, in, in some of the papers and in, in statements made by the uh opposition uh would talk about, well, you can't grant a variance here because um the, the statute and it's eight dash six, the statute that allows you to, to grant variances. Um, the language in that statute says that you're to determine and vary the application of the zoning bylaws, ordinance or regulations in harmony with their general purpose and intent and with due consideration for conserving public health, safety, convenience, welfare and property values solely with respect to a parcel of land where owing to conditions especially affecting such parcel, but not affecting generally the district, and that's the key word, but not affecting generally the district in which it is situated. So if, if the issue that we have is the same for an entire district that doesn't provide a grounds for a variance and they've leaped on that and, and keep saying that the district that we're in is the Village Creek District. And Village Creek prohibits uh as a flat roof district and therefore it applies generally within the district. The case law and the statute is absolutely clear. That's not what district means in that regulation. District means your zoning district. This is in the C D one S district. That's the zoning district. And that district does not have a flat roof requirement. It is unique to a, a cluster of homes within this neighborhood in Village Creek. Uh, and I think uh, uh, that's sort of all that I have to say at the moment. If you have questions for the rest of the folks, we're happy to answer.
I've just got, I've got a real quick one, just so that we're clear, because you've made the statement that the Village uh Creek Architectural Review Board has seen the current plans and has given their general approval.
Correct.
All right. Is anybody that can verify that beyond yourself?
Uh.
So Miguel is uh online or as an attendee. Um, we have someone who, okay, so don't raise your hand until we prompt you to raise your hand because we don't know if you're here speaking for or against an item. But I'm, I'm going to allow Miguel to speak.
Well, if, if he can tell us what the review board
Yeah.
is familiar with and has approved or not approved uh in terms of their outlook on things.
Yes, we felt that uh, so you, you can hear me all. This is, this is Miguel Fresconi at twenty-six Dock Road.
Yes.
Yeah, we hear you.
Okay. And uh, yes, the, we approved, um, let's see, the first plans that Carlo submitted, we approved, but it was a two to one. Um, and then the second set of plans that allowed for the uh, for the view from eighteen. Um, we approved unanimously. And um, we did not take another vote with the present plans because as I understand it and checked with my architectural advisor, they are the same as the plans that Architectural advisor, they are the same as the plans that we. Approved back in March, so we didn't need to have another approval. But our assumption is that the plans that are presently in front of you. With the uh, with the second floor starting at seventeen and a half feet above. Above the um. Oh, man, I'm forgetting words here. As opposed to the eighteen and and seven eighth, which it was. For the September plans that you saw, it's now back to seventeen and a half. Uh, which is what we approved.
Okay, Lee, do you have a question about that?
Uh, no, I understand what what he's saying, and it does. Appear that. You know, they have approved this. You know, we. Uh, we know their architectural consultant and. Uh, she unfortunately can't participate in this hearing. So uh. You know, I think we have to. Uh, go by. Uh, what we're hearing from the applicants on this.
Yeah, well, the applicant had said that uh. The applicant would like to be a good neighbor. And so, uh, absent his wanting to be a good neighbor, he could just decide to exor, you know, ignore everything around him, and then the neighbors could. Tell us that they oppose it. Um, and it could become a civil matter at some point. But for us. Um, the only reason we're taking it into consideration is the applicant said he wanted to be a good neighbor and. They were in trouble to get the approval, so I that's why it's important.
Oh, it is important. I. I greatly consider that. I would have preferred to have something in writing that I could hold in my hand.
I I think you, I think you do, though. I mean, we got that that October sixteenth letter. From Mr. Fresconi. For the Architectural Review Board confirming that they approved these plans.
Okay.
Right.
That's what I thought it was, but just I wanted to hear from him directly.
Yeah. Can I interject one thing? Am I still allowed to do that?
Go right ahead.
Um, I just wanted to point out with those photographs that you were looking at previously, um, there are three trees that are coming down. And so what is visible now? Is not is uh, what will be visible after those trees come down. Is more of the building than is what is visible now. I just wanted to put that in. It's not going to change the plans, and it's not really, and it's not concerning the area. Of eighteen's view, that's, but I just wanted to point that out. Let's see, and as if I could elucidate a little bit about the letter that I signed. About the, um, we do have a process here in Village Creek for people to contest. Any ARB decision. Uh, in which case the uh, a community uh, meeting is held. And everyone states their sides and the community votes. I personally was encouraging the people who had a disagreement with it. To do that, but um, they decided. That it would be, they can be very divisive with neighbor against neighbor, so I think they were correct in not pursuing that, although it would have certainly have have helped. Uh, iron out any any disagreements, so.
Well, so the claim of good neighbor, I think, is substantiated. Um, and when the trees come down, you'll see more of the building, but the crowns of the trees will be gone, and therefore you'll be able to see more into the distance.
Correct.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, Adam, you have anything further?
Uh, no, sir.
Very good. Uh, I will ask. If there is anyone participating in this hearing wishes to speak in favor of the application. Please raise your hand.
The raise your hand feature is at the bottom of the screen, and if you've called in, you press star nine to raise your hand. No raised hands.
No raised hands. Um. Before we leave the. Uh, this side of the application, is there any board member? Who wishes to.
Opposition.
I will get there. I just wanted to ask if any board member had any further questions of Mr. Blank.
No further questions.
Very good. In lieu of that, I will ask. If there is anyone participating in this. Hearing that wishes to speak in opposition of this application. Please raise your hand.
Okay, we've got a couple of raised hands. I'm gonna allow Emily. Emily, go ahead.
Yes, I just saw the documents posted today, and I've been sick, so I had prepared an email and.
Excuse me, Emily, would you? Give us your full name and address for the record.
Sorry, Emily Marshall, fourteen dock. So I've been sick and wasn't able to respond to the documents I saw submitted earlier today. Um, and I started drafting an email, so I'm just going to read that, um. Before the last zoning appeals meeting, I reached out to Village Creek ARB and was told that the case of nineteen dock was no longer in their hands, that that we should deal exclusively with the city's planning and zoning or zoning appeals. Yet I see they are clearly engaged with Mr. Vona and helping him get a variance. Second, Attorney Blank signs many cases as precedence in supporting of getting the variance for nineteen dock. At the last meeting was clearly stated that precedents do not count at these meetings, that the commission is dealing on a case by case basis with the case at hand towards that effect. No one asked for our permission to come to our apartment and take pictures. Had they asked, I would have shown them inside the house where there's a more relevant and clear perspective regarding the impact of nineteen dock. Those pictures referred to as being fourteen dock earlier were not from fourteen dock. I'm not clear what the photos from my driveway at fourteen dock prove, but it is not the view that has been submitted tonight. I invite the commission to come to my house and look at the view from the elevation, which is. Truly. The perspective of the view from my house. Also, it has been brought up several times that the ARB approved the plan and that those of us opposing it were told that we could call a meeting to contest the decision. They failed to clarify that afterwards, they remarked that their decision didn't matter anyway, because the city makes the final decision. That was said in one way or another by more than one community member, including the ARB. Intended, I believe, to have us take it up with the city and not with them, and I took the bait. My belief was that if the ARB has no teeth, as was insinuated, why call for a meeting that may cause neighbors grief? My decision to wait for a city meeting was based on the belief that it was the appropriate and more decisive venue, and it avoided neighbors arguing with each other for no good reasons, since the ARB's decision was not weighted. Much to my dismay, the ARB's approval appears to count very heavily in the bonus its favor. By the way, Carlo first rejected any compromise and was convinced by the ARB to alter his plan. Had I known. That the ARB's decision would have carried so much weight, I would have called a community meeting. So would have my friends who also contested this build. Finally. The plans that I forwarded. That I have, which I had hoped to forward, and I was sick and was not able to do. Are not the plans that were submitted to the community of Village Creek. So this discussion about approving plans. That are being approved by the ARB are not what the community was led to believe was taking place. Finally, since this was not, I didn't have an opportunity at the last meeting. Apparently named calling is a is allowed. Mr. Vona called me a hypocrite because we're renovating. Carlo, you know full well that all we are doing is updating. We are not elevating our home. We are doing nothing different than updating our home to make it livable, because it was literally a mess. We're not building up. And the reason we're not building up is because it would have blocked our neighbors' view behind us. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Rick Costatini.
Hi, everyone. Rick Costantini from FLB Law. Can you hear me okay?
Mm hmm.
Okay, thank you. Uh. Like I said, my name is Rick Costantini from FLB Law. I represent Terry Sims, uh, who lives at sixteen Dock Road, um, across the street. I submitted a letter today, um. Into the record, so that way you have it in written form and it's part of the record. Uh, addressing some of the issues that were discussed during the last hearing, so I wanted to make sure that we had that in the record. Um, I understand it was submitted today, so you probably haven't had a chance to review it. Um, the letter itself is about five pages. It looked significantly longer, because I did attach the case law to it. Just so that it's part of the record. I think. I was gonna start talking about the FEMA compliance, but I think I should start with some of the comments that were just made, um. Two things, one, whether a neighbor appeals to the ARB or not, does not waive their right to speak in opposition at the ZBA. Um, or um, any other uh, application further down the line.
Sure.
Also, the ARB approval is not. The basis for which the ZBA determines whether or not the variance is appropriate. The ultimate question for the ZBA.
You know, you gotta stop for a second, Rick. If you give us your opinion. And you say you're representing your client, and your client. Does like or does not like. Um, and has aspects of the this that they don't agree to. Uh, and they want us to consider that. That's fine. But when you start being our legal advisor, not fine. So don't go there. Thank you.
I I'm not being your legal advisor, but I have every right to advise it to add, to provide into the record.
You can, you can, but let's not go through pages of dicta.
I I need to.
There's no right to the point.
Well, I I I appreciate that, but I need to get into the record. For purposes of whether or not there's potentially an appeal, to make sure that the record is clear that you have the information in front of you. Regarding your decisions, I need to go through my material, and I appreciate that.
Mr. Costantini, were you the one who submitted eighty-eight pages? Of legal documents to this board?
I submitted a five pa, a five-page letter with attached with the with the case law attached to it, yes. I provided the the actual cases, not just quotes from.
Okay, first of all, I want to comment, this is my own personal opinion. Submitting information like that. Be, immediately before a public hearing. Is. Uh, I think just a gross injustice to us to try to go through that information. That's all. You may continue.
I I I understand. I was writing in response to the uh, material.
Then you should have done it in a timely manner.
It was in response.
Skim through that.
Under, I understand that, but there was a a letter.
Then you should have submitted it two weeks ago or three weeks ago.
If you would allow me to finish, I was writing, I was writing in response to the updated materials and the information submitted by the applicant yesterday. So as as quickly as I could submit a letter in response based on those materials, I did so, which was today. And I understand that it's lengthy, and I didn't expect you to read all of the case law, but I wanted those documents as part of the record. My letter, the five-page letter stands on its own. I don't, that that's not the uh, the case law was meant to just provide into the record so that it was there. Again, I I, if I may, the. Ultimate question for the ZBA here is whether or not this application meets the requirements under the Connecticut statute.
No, the ultimate question for the ZBA is what the hell the ZBA itself says. So don't go there. I just told you not to.
God!
Just follow what you want to say about the objections that your client has. Don't give us advice.
I'm not giving you advice.
You did, you just did.
I am not provide, you have legal counsel. I'm not your legal counsel. I am providing for the record. Information I believe that is pertinent. To make a decision, and we're permitted to do so.
If you are, but you're not to tell us what is an appropriate decision by the ZBA. That's just not in.
I'm not, I'm not telling you what is or is not an appropriate decision. I am telling you the Connecticut statute and the standard by which you're to apply. That is it.
And we have a great familiarity with the Connecticut statute, because we've been studying it the last couple of weeks. Intensively, so we have no questions about that. What you might want to do is tell us what basis your client has to object.
The basis relies in the language of the statute. That that is the basis. The statute is clear about what is appropriate for granting a variance. First and foremost, you need to show a hardship. And the applicant has failed to show a hardship. The language, the 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 case law and hardship is absolutely clear in Connecticut. Applicant references the case of Meyer v. Whitman. It's a Supreme Court case, the highest court in in the state of Connecticut. From twenty nineteen. The problem is. The quotes that were submitted by the applicant in the letter do not give full context to what that case dealt with. In that case, yes, the the court ultimately decided. That the variance was was proper, but the reason was because when the property was required to comply with the FEMA regulations. And the zone and the height requirements under the regulations. That left the property with a seven point seven foot allowable buildable height, meaning you had to build a house that was no larger than seven point seven feet tall. Ultimately, it was confiscatory. And that is the reason that the Supreme Court said, yes, this essentially uh, uh, resulted in a taking. You weren't, you aren't allowed to build anything. That is completely opposite to the situation we find ourselves in here. The applicant can raise the existing structure. That currently exists on the site. To FEMA compliance. Within zoning regulations regarding height and stories. The existing structure can be raised without the need for any variance. What they are asking for. Is additional buildable area, additional livable area. That's the key part to why Meyer Whitman does not apply to this case, to the to the matter before you. That it's a, it's a significant, significant point. Again. Meyer Whitman.
Let's stop a second. I think you, once again, down the wrong. If you would look at section six. Of three, which says to determine and vary the application, it goes on. And it talks about all the things that we can consider. Um, and it mentions exceptional difficulty as well as unusual hardship. It does, doesn't it? By the way.
Yes.
It does. All right, so you have excluded certain things from your explanation that are clear to us, because we have the documents in our hand, because we've been dealing with it the past two weeks. So that's why I've been on your case. Uh, making an argument, I'm glad that you're making the argument, if you would just stick. To what the statute actually says.
I I will, and hardship and exceptional difficulty. Under Connecticut law, as interpreted by the Supreme Court, are viewed as the same thing. There's no, they make no distinction between what hardship and exceptional difficulty means. And I can tell you this, as chairman, as co-chairman of this current, the CBA's Planning and Zoning Section currently. We are in the process of working on a fix to the variance statute because of some of the issues that arise as we're dealing with here today. So I'm very intimately aware of what the case law says regarding this issue.
Yeah, does Fuller agree with that? Does his book agree with what you just said?
Pardon me?
Does Fuller? His book that's always referenced, and I think even you mentioned in your, your long letter. Does he, I don't think it does, but I think he doesn't put it that way. Um, maybe your committee thinks it ought to be that way, but that's a committee that hasn't impacted. The legislation as yet that I'm aware of, because I know somebody else has signed the committee. Who said he'd like to see it impacted, but it hasn't yet.
The the, again, I I'm I'm gonna go back to to my original point. The question remains for the board is whether or not there's a valid hardship. And we do not believe there is one, because the property owner can raise their existing structure without the need for a variance, keep the existing structure in place. At a height that is within the regulations, that is fully FEMA compliant. You know, the talk was earlier, there were comments made that. There was a desire to bring the the house into FEMA compliance. That desire is shared by everyone. You don't have to raise the the house and add a sec, uh, an additional story. To come into FEMA compliance. It would be different, and it would be similar to the Meyer Whitman case, if by raising the existing structure. They exceeded the height. But that's not the case. They are allowed to completely raise the house into FEMA compliance as is. The difference is they are looking to add additional livable area. That is not appropriate for the granting of a variance. Again, I will cite De Verillo, which is a um, a Connecticut appellate court case, quote. Disappointment in the use of the subject property, namely the inability to build a larger structure, did not constitute a requisite hardship under Connecticut law, Connecticut appellate court case. All right? Additionally. There were references made to Haskock and another case called Questle. These were all cases that were cited by the applicant in their letter to you submitted yesterday. I will point out, in Questle, which is a Superior Court case, is not a Supreme Court case. They state, the supresent case is more similar to that of Haskock. In the present case, DBM, the ZBA members discussed that the defendant was only asking for the minimum increase in height. To meet the revised flood zone regulations of both the City of Stanford and FEMA. Quote, in addition, the livable space of the cottage did not increase as a condition of granting the variance. Because it's, it's widely known that you don't get a variance because you want a larger house. That's not sufficient for the granting of a hardship.
You know, that's not how we usually would grant one.
Well, um, and and again, whether or not. And and again, whether or not. Pardon me?
Would you wrap up, please?
I I have a few more points to make, if you will. Um, again, what has been done historically? I I understand, but at the same time, the case law is clear on this. Secondly, we, there was, uh, we talked about um, unique hardship to the subject property. Last time and I want, and it was raised during the applicant's presentation, I'd like to address that again. The question was whether or not the um, the flat roof requirement was uh, sufficient for uh, for granting a hardship. It's a sufficient showing of a hardship. I do not believe that to be the case. The the language does say district in the statute, but the Supreme Court, who gets to interpret the statutes. States that it's in in the case of Arilla, which is, again, this is appellate court case. But discussing a Supreme Court decision talked about has to, how it has to be equally applicable to other properties in the neighborhood. Or the the hardship can't be equally applicable to other properties in the neighborhood. In their own decision discussing this section, they're talking about it being applicable to the neighborhood. That's what we have here. There are multiple homes and numerous properties that are subject to the same restriction. Furthermore, it's akin to it being a self-created hardship. The house was purchased with the understanding that this restriction was in place. It's not a hardship because you want to have a larger house. That's not sufficient.
After you hear, after you hear our discussion later, it'll become clear to you. But you're kinda tilting it against the windmill at the moment. This isn't making a lot of sense to me. Because that isn't the key issue. So finish up, please.
There was also a question raised at the last hearing about a a prior approval that was done, I think in two thousand seventeen for twenty-eight Doc Road. I I mean, I think this board already knows this and I'm I'm sort of speaking this already. Simply because a prior case was decided one way on similar circumstances has no bearing on the current application.
Yeah, our language is past is not precedent.
Exact, thank you. That that's exactly right. That's, it's, it has really no bearing whatsoever on the current application. It was raised during the the last hearing about um, financial considerations. Meaning that the property owner wanted to maximize value of the property. Again, that's not sufficient. Trying to maximize the value of a piece of property is not sufficient for granting of a variance. I I just wanted to just end on one, one point and I and then I will. Go away quietly. The. The issue remains that the property owner is not being deprived of anything. They have an existing structure that they are free to keep. What they are looking for is this board to allow them to build an additional eight hundred square feet. I believe it is eight fourteen. Additional eight hundred and fourteen square feet of livable space. And in order to get that extra space, they need the variance. But that, the the then the the desire to have this additional space. Is not proper grounds for a variance, when you can raise the structure and be fully compliant. So I will leave it at that.
Questions.
I wanna, as soon as everybody asks their questions, I wanna go to Tammy and have her clarify a couple of things. Go ahead.
Um, you mentioned early on, Mister Constantine, that you wanted to read this into the record for an appeal. What sort of appeal were you thinking of?
No, no, my point is that the record needs to be clear in the event that an appeal is is filed. So the, a court would only be allowed to review the record appeal. So if I don't get this information into the record. If my client or any other member of the uh, of the neighborhood wished to appeal, then that they. This information would, this the only way that information would be part of the record is if I submit it and discuss it.
And and may I just ask, the objection to this plan is what?
The, my client's objection is that the the applicant has not shown that there's a hardship that should permit them to to add the additional space.
Yeah, and that may be true with some of the aspects of the claims of the attorney for the applicant. But not necessarily all of them.
Um, this is Miguel. I'm, I wanna follow rules. When can it, is there a place when I can reply to these negative comments?
Actually, you've already responded. And we don't usually allow. People to speak twice during the hearing.
Yeah, and and it's not a, you know, don't see this as a contest between Architectural Review Board and its legitimacy. And what we're handling here in the Z B A. Your significance exists solely because the applicant wants to be a good neighbor. And wants to take into account what the review board has said.
I mean, I I do have, um, I grew up in Village Creek, so I have some historical. Relevant things, but uh, but you know, I I don't wanna.
That's okay. No, we can't let you do that.
Okay.
Hey, is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Tammy, anyone?
So, well, we have the same.
I I wanted to know. The as of right. Ability of the applicant to increase the structure to the size he's requesting. We, I know we have a roof difficulty. We'll get to that in a second. So the as of right exists for that applicant to build the structure to the size he has put down his plans. Story height is fine?
N- no, I mean that he's seeking a third story. That's the, he he would be limited to two and a half. Because he's not doing a pitched roof, which constitutes the definition of half story. He's doing a full, you know, even though it's not the full span of the existing structure, it is, is it's vertically. I don't know, another way to say it may be more bulky because it doesn't have the pitch. So that's why they need the third story. I mean, that's why they need a variance to allow.
It's our definition, partly because he's raising it.
It's our, well, eh, yeah, I mean, eh, because of the raise he's making. The lower level will be the first story, which will be devoted to parking and storage only, because it's in the flood. Then the, what, what? The main living area is existing, but is proposed to be remodeled, and then they do propose. What amounts to sort of half of the footprint. But in vertical expansion, but per definition, it's the third story.
And then we run into a problem because of the type of roof.
Yes. I believe we do. Because under a gable roof or some type of pitched roof. Uh, it could be configured to meet. The uh, requirements of the half story, as I see it.
That's what I was gonna say. Could it, could it be summarized and simplified to the applicant is caught between. Um, the Village Creek rules and. Within the city of Norwalk's rules.
Yeah. Simple thing to allow him to expand the house, cause it's really. Not a problem. What is a problem was the roof. Um, and it's, I'm sure I understand why the flat roof is a problem for zoning, but. In this case, it's just really a contradiction. So if you put in a roof that juts up higher into the air, then he's okay with zoning. If you lay it. Then he's not okay, but the reason they don't want it flat is because they don't want. Structure to bounce up even higher. Well, it isn't bouncing up even higher. It's just that the roof conforms to um, the Village Creek requirements because he wants to be a good neighbor. So what we have to decide is if if we think there's a practical difficulty that arises. Because of his desire to fulfill the requirements of the review board locally. Versus what the zoning code would require. Particularly since he could build it if we, if he didn't do the flat roof and did the. Gable roof, is that the right term?
Yes.
No, if he did the gable roof, then he'd be fine, but that's less good for the neighbors, so. What zoning plans, okay, but the neighbors won't. I I think that is a practical.
He's caught between a rock and a hard place on this.
So that's what the board gets to decide is whether the, that the flat roof is the thing that's really impeding an approval here.
Well, uh, should we let Mister Blank respond?
Can we just?
Just before you do, I I think there's elements of the application that uh, shouldn't affect us. For instance, it doesn't matter if it becomes more valuable or less valuable. And a whole lot of other things. We're not setting standards for the district or for the Village Creek area. Um, we're just trying to deal with a conflict of. Two goals, one with what the neighbor wants to get done and be happy with the rest of the neighbors and what the city requires as to roof style.
Yeah, I mean, if didn't have the flat roof restriction. He's put a gable roof over the entire house with dormers. And uh, it would not be substantially higher, but it would be. One hundred percent legal in terms of zoning.
So I think we're in the same place.
I think so.
I do too.
Um, Adam, do you wish to uh, respond at this time?
The the only thing, just just because there was a sort of a threat of an appeal, I I I just wanna make sure that Tammy's confirmed that there's nobody else from the public that wanted to speak before we.
Right.
Shut them out.
I don't wanna push anybody who wanted to speak out of the way. I want them to raise their hand and say they wanna speak.
And so this is your, so this is not to have a second go at opposition. You're just talking about new, so.
New speakers.
There's nobody, there's the same at these, so.
I I I think, then I think you folks have uh, sort of. Covered what I would have wrote, my rebuttal was on the um, the the story, the the flat roof versus pitch roof, which I think you've you've hit. Uh, you understand fully, um, and and the photo, there was a concern from Ms. Marshall about photos. I mean. We, we were doing that really to to try to prove their case, not not our case. I mean, if they, if they wanted to submit photos to show that there were some unique. Problem that we were proposing for their views, they, nothing, nothing stopped them from submitting stuff. We we did what we thought we could and we didn't wanna run through people's houses, so.
I I think I understand the point, but we also know that a reasonable increase in size. Um, that could affect the view is not a showstopper.
Yeah. Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mister Blank. At this time, uh, I will. Uh, close the public hearing. And if there are no objections, we will move into uh, discussion mode on this.
Just, could I just remind the board that we are going to require two votes tonight? So we'll have the vote on the variants and then the one on the coastal site plan.
Give us a guidance on the um, conservation side of it again.
For the coastal site plan, it is, would you find that the motion? Would be consistent with the C C M A goals and policies? And it would not adversely impact any coastal resources? So just the. Portion of the granting of the variance, not, you're not looking at the overall site.
And we're not granting anything with the driveway, only granting uh, with the building. That statement actually would be true if we were granting the driveway change.
Yeah, this is.
Which we're not.
Third story.
Yeah, cool. So, Lee, you go to.
Well, I I I think. Good arguments been presented on both sides. And I I really have to weigh the architectural aspects with the. Requirements of the Village Creek Historic District. Uh, and the zoning regulations and. You know, I was trying to think, you know, is is there an approach to this roof? That could work and. You know, I mean, if you made this a mansard roof, it's still flat, but it's not in keeping with the mid-century modern look. And I think that's, to me, as as an architect. Uh, paramount to, you know, this application, uh. Which uh, Mister Vona and his family are trying to. Really, you know. Fit in the neighborhood with what they want to accomplish. Uh, we also have to understand that. Uh, they are losing. The, the use of the lower level or the first floor. As habitable space only usable as parking and storage because of the flood regulations. Uh, I don't see this as a major intrusion. And I really don't see this also as a. Tool to vastly. Make this a far more expensive. Property, which is not under our. Our venue. We, we do not deal with the finances. Uh, you know, of development in, on this board. So uh, I think, as I said, good arguments have been presented. I think that we've gone through uh, the approval of the Architectural Review Board. I would have liked to have seen a letter. From that organization confirming it. But uh. I think that we've received enough. Verbal confirmation during this hearing that I'm comfortable uh, with the decision of the Architectural Review Board. And therefore.
You're comfortable with the decision or you're comfortable that they had the information that we have?
The information they have. They've had and uh, you know, certainly the members of that board. Are probably more familiar with. The design restraints uh, than than we are and.
Yeah, but Lee, I think you have to, if you're a property owner there, you have to agree. To the restrictions the board is going to give.
Oh, yeah.
Their approvals. We don't, we don't recognize them as an executive authority.
I know.
We we have their opinion, they're an amalgamation of the neighbors. And so we're hearing this from this amalgamation of the neighbors. And I just wanted to make sure they had the same info we have, that's all.
Yes, and I think they do.
Yeah, I think so too.
Okay, then we're in agreement on that. Like to hear opinion?
Stuff that we don't deal with is we don't worry about property issues unless there's some heinous suggestion. Like putting a contractor yard at that location. That would affect property values in a very negative way, be very obvious. This, the other changes are beyond our purview. Having um, something built the, that affects review is something that isn't uh, embodied in Connecticut law that I know of.
As far as I know, it is not.
It is in New York, but I don't believe it is.
I, you know, I I know that we've made. The view, an issue for ourselves. But there's no basis in law and I I think we had a true concern. For the uh, property owners across the street on this.
The owner, the applicant had the concerns.
And I I think just showing us that the houses across the street. Are at least. Ten feet higher. In elevation, first floor than uh, this house. I think goes to show that uh, the applicant has made an effort. Uh, they moved the the big mast to where it wouldn't be.
Just didn't want us to get embodied in things that we shouldn't be dealing with.
Oh, I I agree. No, we're, we're discussing it, Andy, to eliminate them.
Well, anyway, we shouldn't even deal with them, but. Because that's not part of our, we could say that uh, we don't like the architectural plan because of the look of the house. That's not ours to deal with.
No.
For example. So um, I think that we have seen the applicant act like a good neighbor. He has in fact talked to neighbors. He has in fact gone before a review board in his neighborhood. There are a couple of neighbors, at least, that are not happy. Um, they have expressed their concerns. Has he responded to some of their complaints? It appears that he has. He changed the structure of the house that he came to us to get an approval for. From having the larger increase in height on the right to moving it to the left side of the house. So I'm at the point where I think that if he has. A reasonable approach to the size of the house, and I think he does. Um, then it all boils down to this idiot thing between the flat roof and the gable roof. It's just. I could call it an idiot thing because nobody can write a zoning code that covers every single little thing. And in this case, I I don't think hanging it up. Uh, on the style of roof is, makes any sense.
Well, we have, we have granted. Well, we have, we have granted variances in the past on roofites. Uh, primarily with gable roofs.
Well, we also granted it, it, the type of roof and the height of roof. To be varied, because all the houses adjoining it were varied, but because it was a corner house, it wasn't permitted under the zoning code. I mean, when things don't make sense, we know that they don't make sense.
Yeah, and I think that's true in this case. You know, I mean, I I think we are finding the imperfections in the new zoning regs. And we're not trying to do an end route, I think we are looking for positive solutions. And in this case, I think the applicant has made. Uh, uh, has come up with a a positive solution for a situation that. Is difficult.
Yep.
So, staff wanted to interject two things, we have a raised hand again, so I just wanna remind the attendees that there's no longer an opportunity for public comment. And then the second was just to make sure uh that we. Consider, all things considered, that we're very careful about recognizing the boards. What the board recognizes as a zoning hardship for any motion they may make or not.
Okay.
Yeah, I find that it'd be a practical difficulty trying to square away the flat roof versus the gable roof. Um, because we're a gable roof, we'd be fine, uh, because it's a flat roof, we're not fine. So, I I don't think that should hold us up from granting the variance, that variance.
Is that a motion, Andy? Cuz if it is, I will.
Well, I thought Lee was gonna make the motion since.
No, Andy, I think you've been far more eloquent on this.
Yeah, well, with.
Before you make. Yeah, before you make any motion, I just wanna make sure that that I'm like, also.
Yep.
In line with all this, if if the applicant wanted to not run afoul of the historic district. And not run afoul of the zoning regs, they they would not be able to put that that addition on the top. At all, it would be two stories, it'd be the main living floor and it would be the the basement storage floor.
That's correct.
Yeah. The only reason that they can't do the gabled roof as of right is because of the the historic district, and that is what would constitute the practical difficulty.
I don't know if it's the historic district or the agreement uh by property owners to abide by what the Architectural Review Board tells. I think it's the latter. Does anybody know on the board that this is banned somehow by the?
Well, I know that probably, I'm guessing twenty-five years ago. An addition was put on one of the original houses uh with a gable roof on it, but I think it was well before. Uh, the redrafting of the uh. The bylaws and uh the creation of the historic district. It's an addition that would not have been approved today. But we can't look at.
They did not create a village district, so they don't have their own uh zoning review.
No.
This is just a neighborhood thing.
Yeah, it's just a historic neighborhood like several others in Norwalk.
But, yeah, the problem really is, is if you're trying to live with your neighbors and live by their architectural standards. And then you wanna live within the city zoning code and the two conflict, is it sensible? To force that and say that, yeah, therefore no variance, and in my view, it's not sensible.
No, I I think, you know, one of, at least one of my goals is trying to make sense of this nonsense in in general. With zoning regulations, uh, because we all know that month after month, we sit here and we look at these applications that. Sometimes get a little bit crazy and that's, this is one of them. Um, so Andy, I'm gonna defer to you to make a a motion on this.
I wanna do that, but I'm gonna check with Adam, Adam, the only variance that I'm interested in going forward with is the variance for the structure itself. Does that impede your plan in any way?
That's, Andy, that's all he's seeking variance up, is just the third story.
I just wanna understand, I thought he was actually seeking more than one variance.
No.
Just just the structure.
Just just the stories, I think, right?
Correct.
Like, the height of the structure is compliant.
Yeah, so. I move that the Z B A grant the the addition of the third story with the flat roof as presented. Um, and the problem I see is a practical difficulty revolving around the conflict of what the Architectural Review Board, therefore the neighborhood. Uh, desires in a house design versus what the zoning code requires in a roof slash height uh design.
I will second that. Any comment from the board?
Hope, I'd be happy to vote on it.
Okay, well, um, all those in favor, raise your hand and signify by saying aye. Yeah, we are unanimous in approving the uh the request for a variance.
Okay.
So next we'll do the coastal site plan motion.
Yeah, the site plan motion is, as you had stated, that language, uh, which is that that we see no conflict. Uh, with the goals of uh the coastal authority. And that uh we wanna put the plan forward for the review as well as the approval of variance. Tam, that close?
Eh, uh, that that sounds good, um, I just wanna make sure, so we had the vote for.
One half of it, we gotta do another.
I know we said unanimous, but I, did we get Steve's vote?
Yes, you did, I raised my hand and said yes.
Okay, thank you, okay.
So we have to do this as a separate book, so.
Correct, yeah, sorry.
I moved it, we need a second, then we go.
Uh, all those in favor of uh granting the coastal site plan approval? Please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Steve disappeared, so I don't.
Been here the whole time, Andy.
Okay, yeah, for some reason on my screen, you come and go.
I haven't had, I have not been on video yet.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Fantastic. And, um, I don't know if the attorney isn't around still, but um. He should double check and see if we don't have somebody that's on the same committee as he. Um, right here in Norwalk, he might be our city attorney. Anyway, moving on.
Okay, we have minutes from the the last meeting. Hope everybody has read through them and found whatever errors or corrections are needed. Um. But everyone is copacetic with the minutes, please uh raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
I wasn't here last month, so I'll uh.
You're excused.
And thanks for taking the time to bone up on this so that you could sit tonight.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you, Ben.
Started digging through the materials and I was like, oh, this, this.
Yeah, I'll, I apologize that I took so much time combating our friendly attorney. Um, I I have objected continuously while I'm on this board, that when attorneys come to tell us what we must do. I will stop them in their tracks, that, and I'll point out that in some states, Colorado being one. Cuz I'm familiar with a couple of the Superior Court justices there. If you show up to the zoning board and tell them how they must do things and you're an attorney, then you can be disbarred. That's not true in Connecticut, but I have a strong feeling that they gotta couch the language that it is their opinion. And they think their opinion is supported versus you must, it has to, the Z B A, whether they're quoting a decision or not. So that's why I always leave them on this, but I apologize for taking your time.
I don't think of an apology is needed.
No, I.
Well, I mean, well, I, well, I I would say sometimes it's not good to get into heated arguments when um. Not really justifiable, Andy, you already know what 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 has to be done already, I don't think you have to go into detail with, you know, with each attorney. Uh, they kinda get the point already, but they love to argue and we don't wanna be baited, we don't wanna be baited into an argument. And have and have the public, you know, take notes on it, you know what I mean?
And some of these attorneys get paid by the word, so uh, hence the eighty-eight pages.
Yeah, I was really taken back by that.
Oh, I was more than taken aback.
Yeah.
I was P O'd.
Yeah.
By me or by the uh?
No, by that, by the submission of that document to us.
Yeah. Y'all, if you haven't had an opportunity to serve on a board or get some legal education. Page after page after page after page of it can be to be nothing but what is called dicta. The actual decision is usually pretty concise, and it's really great to throw at people. Uh, case after case after case, that are just full of pages and pages and pages of dicta, and that doesn't help us get our job done.
No, I think it diverts us from our true purpose.
Agreed, it does. Agreed.
Okay, anybody have anything else to bring up? Hearing nothing?
I, yeah.
Go ahead, Keith.
Just gonna ask for a motion, now, we have a hot water boiler that's not working, so I need to go.
Get your hot water going, man, it's getting cold out.
It is, I had a cold shower this morning, I don't wanna do it tomorrow.
Oh, well, good luck with it, and I will make a motion that we uh adjourn uh uh this meeting.
And I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Nice seeing you, Ben, take care, guys.
Bye bye.